Good evening. Welcome to the Board of, the meeting of the Board of Selectmen of Yarmouth of March 28th, 2023. This is going to be a hybrid meeting and therefore the following notice has to be read into the record. This is to formally advise that as of, as required by General Laws Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16th, 2021, as amended by special legislation dated July 16th, 2022. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, March 28th, 2023, at 5:45 PM, beginning with an executive session and opening to the public no sooner than 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below in the Zoom instructions are posted on the Yarmouth website. Do I have a motion to move into executive session to consider pursuant to General Laws Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss the non-union negotiations with the fire chief agreement?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Mark?
I vote aye.
Dorcas?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're in executive session. We will return to public section, to public session as soon as we conclude our business in executive session. Good evening. Welcome to the public portion of the meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen of March 28th, 2023. This is a hybrid meeting. The required notices have been read into the record, so we will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I do.
Go ahead.
I have some announcements, Mr. Chairman. In fact, we have a few little events that are coming up. I want to call everyone's attention to the fact on April 25, we have our annual town meeting, which will be held at the Matta Keys School, 6:00 PM. Looking forward to that very much. May 16 is the annual town election, and all of the information on that is available online. Please visit our website. And I also want to make an announcement that in preparation to try to spread some word for the annual town meeting, we're having a wastewater public forum. Questions, answers, information. We'll have a little presentation. It's going to be Thursday, April 13, at 6:00 PM at the Senior Center. There's plenty of parking. Come on out. We hope to have a nice evening.
All right. Thank you very much. It's good to get those notices out early because some people don't watch the meeting all night long and wait until, you know, later and they could miss these notices. So thanks for doing that. Public comment? Peter?
You know, I agree with Chris Greeley's commendation of the people who did the various departmental presentations last week, but what I miss is the, the dollars and cents that would have been involved with the, with each particular, you know, the capital budget or the, especially the, what, the free cash thing. And the Board ended up already voting on something like that, right? On the article that involved the free cash, for example? Is that right? Did you vote on that article that involves the free cash? Very specifically because that is the one that contains in it the bonding for the boardwalk at the drive-in?
I'm trying to follow you. You're talking about?
Community preservation.
Whatever.
That's, yeah, that's, that's.
Oh, so that didn't come up yet?
No, that came up.
But, see, that's, you know, the policy part of it was very good, I think, as I said, but, but I wish that we had seen, you know, the dollars and cents going along with the, with those presentations. And, I mean, is, is this something that, you know, might come up again, for example, on the, on the 5th of April or something like that, the next meeting?
Well, we, first of all, we make recommendations only, as you know, and then it's, the appropriations either made or not at town meeting, but the CPC articles do have funding amounts in them. And we can, we can go over them. Whether we voted on them or not is, is not really a problem.
No, this, you know, I just thought I might have wanted to say something about that, one specific one under the community preservation or wherever it falls.
Article 32, I don't know if that's the article you were referring to. It's open space recreation projects, and monies were going to Friends of Bass River?
No.
YD Red Sox, Department of Public Works, the boardwalk for the Red Wilson Field, and for bog restoration. They all have amounts of money, which equal about 3.2 million. But we can.
That's, that, you know, that's the, the three million, I think, was the bond that was supposed to.
The bond, yeah. The bond is, it's going to be a $3 million bond, if I recall. Is that correct?
That's what I thought.
Yes.
And that's really going to be a general obligation bond of the town, but the monies are going to come by payments through the CPC funds.
Well, anyway, I, as I said, I'm not prepared to do that right now.
We can talk about that.
I would need to, you know, get my act together a little bit better. I just wondered what happened, you know? And it, the future presentations are going to be along those same lines. It's mostly policy statements or something like that, rather than.
That was with capital budget, where they were, they spent a lot of time studying how they were going to go about approaching capital items, setting some standards, setting priorities, rating the readiness and the necessity of certain things. But on top of that, there's going to be an actual capital budget. And I, I don't think we, we went through capital budget article, did we, Bob?
Nope. Still needs a recommendation.
Yeah, we haven't done that one yet.
Okay.
In terms of the dollars and cents. We just talked about the framework.
All right. So maybe next week or something like that.
Maybe tonight.
And we also have on April 4th, the next meeting, the town meeting walkthrough. So, so next Tuesday, when we walk through every single article, you'll be able to ask any questions, get the amounts.
Okay, so that, that would be appropriate. Great. Thank you.
Anyone else had public comment? Anyone on the screen?
No public comments.
Okay. Then we will move along. The next item is recognition of retiree Tom Gent, DPW Waste Management. And I understand that Jeff Colby is an O and/or.
Whitehouse is here with us.
Is he, is he going to be here?
No.
Where's Tom? He's not here.
He's not?
He's not.
Are you going to?
He's already relocated, actually, to his new home in Florida.
Oh, he has?
In a nice sunny place.
Okay.
So hopefully he'll zoom in, but if not, he's already been sent the link, so he'll definitely be watching.
Okay. Are you going to have him say a few words?
If you don't mind.
Sure.
I'd be glad to.
Love to have you do that.
Okay, great. Yes, I'm Roby Whitehouse. I'm the Assistant DPW Director, and I've had the pleasure of working with Tom Gent for the past few years. And I can give you a little bit of history on Tom. He started over 25 years ago at the Commercial Transfer Station when it was run by Peter Homer. He started off as a heavy truck driver, and then he was promoted in 2003 to a heavy equipment truck driver. Then he was promoted in 2006 as the foreman of the Commercial Transfer Station. And then in 2013, when the Commercial Transfer Station was leased out and the employees either had an option to move down to the disposal area or to find other employment, he chose to stay with the town, which we're very glad he did because he was an excellent heavy equipment operator. He was very detail oriented. He was a pleasure to work with. He was someone who knew his role and was a very good equipment operator. He drove the 2020 Western Star that was purchased by the town, had over 200, had over 100,000 miles on it, close to 150,000 miles on it when he left, when he retired, and it still looks brand new. Was the type of employee who took dedication and real concern with the equipment that he operated, and it was my honor and pleasure to work with him. I am so grateful that you're acknowledging him, and I expressed these same words to him before he left, but I just wanted to express them again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to read this citation into the record, and perhaps you can accept it and get it to him, you or Jeff?
Absolutely.
It says, "Town of Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, official citation. Be it known that the Town of Yarmouth hereby recognizes Thomas Gent on his retirement as heavy equipment operator effective March 3rd, 2023, and for dedicated service to the Town of Yarmouth. And be it further known that the Town of Yarmouth extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for his total 25 years of tireless service in the Department of Public Works Sanitation Division. This citation is duly signed by the Chairman, Board of Selectmen, on this 20th day of March in the year of our Lord 2023, and my signature follows on behalf of each and every member of the Board." So if you come.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have another official recognition and thanks to John Sawyer, who has served as the active fire chief during the time of retirement of Chief Phil Simonian and the hiring of our new chief. And this, this citation is in recognition of exceptional service and dedication to the Town of Yarmouth Fire Department. And it says, "And be it further known that the Town of Yarmouth extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for serving as acute acting fire chief. This commendation is duly signed by the Board of Selectmen on this 20th day of March in the year of our Lord 2023." And I have, and each individual member of the Board has signed this, and we are very, very appreciative of John's service. And he provided a lot of stability to the department during the transition and did so at a very high level, at a very high level of service. So thank you, John Next item is a wastewater update. And I understand we're going to have this in three-part harmony, correct?
Ladies and gentlemen, Jeff Colby, Director of Public Works.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Colby, Director of Public Works, here to give you the overview of the wastewater project. It is a presentation that we have been doing to various committees. Did a presentation to Rotary just on Friday. I believe Bob has a presentation to them as well this week to talk about some of the financing components. So really trying to get the word out about the project generally. So why are we doing this? The graphic on the right is a good one in showing people generally what septic system looks like. We get calls all the time about, you know, what that, what that is. They, you know, they moved from Off Cape to Yarmouth. They thought maybe they were on a sewer system. What's the septic system? But what you can see from that graphic is there is leaching of effluent into the ground, and we have a water table below all of us, and that effluent eventually reaches that water table. And the issue that we have environmentally is nitrogen pollution within our estuaries, primarily Bass River, Parkers River, and Lewis Bay. So with that said, you know, if it was an extremely rural area, as it was back in the 1950s, not as much of a significant issue. But you can see from that graphic on the bottom right there, just the growth that's happened in recent decades. The green represents the open space, and yellow is developed and red is commercial on that graphic. In fact, the statistic we like to share is that there's been a 722% increase in population between 1951 and 2010. It has significantly increased, and just the number of people using those septic systems is the contributing factor to that nitrogen pollution. A few more statistics here as well. In order to meet the water quality standards that we need to for the Town of Yarmouth, we would need to remove 59.5% of the septic systems in the Bass River watershed. That's a pretty significant number. But that only increases for the Parkers River watershed to 96% of the septic systems to being removed, and 80% in Lewis Bay. So those are pretty, some pretty significant numbers for the Town of Yarmouth. And what does that look like? You just mentioned nitrogen pollution. What that does is it really over-nutrifies the waters, and it allows algae to grow and fish to die from that lack of oxygen within that embayment. And here's a recent picture from last summer, when the blooms typically peak. And this is what it looks like, what it did look like out of the Bass River. There's been a lot of discussion recently about the DEP regulations and what does that mean? And these DEP regulations are saying for these nitrogen-sensitive areas, the three that I just mentioned, primarily the Bass River, Parkers River, and Lewis Bay watersheds, that residents in those areas would need to put in an innovative alternative septic system. Those septic systems components are a high-level treatment system that's added to a Title V system, removes the nitrogen, but those costs are upwards of $50,000 to do so. As an alternative, towns can pursue a watershed permit, which is consistent with what the Town of Yarmouth is planning to do with our wastewater program. And that would avoid individuals having to upgrade their septic systems. We'll do it on a community-wide basis and treat the effluent, treat the wastewater in a community-wide program, and that is significantly less costly than having to do it on an individual basis. So this is an environmental project, as I've just gone through, with economic benefits. These economic benefits will help us pay for the program, help us fund that. And back in 2018, the Town of Yarmouth had the UMass Donahue Institute do a study, and that study determined that there was in excess of $100 million of pent-up redevelopment demand within the community. And so as part of that, we're looking at different aspects. The commercial tax base, which is the third bullet on that screen, has been decreasing in recent years, and the number that I heard most recently was only 6% of our tax base is commercial. And that's getting to a relatively unhealthy level. We'd like to see that reversed and share that tax burden amongst more of the business community. There's also this component relative to land use control. So it's not unfettered growth. DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, actually requires that we manage that development and that growth within those sewer areas. So we do have land use controls that have been developed. They're being reviewed by the Water Resource Advisory Committee, and will come to your Board soon. In that growth control, that land use controls, they require that we manage to a particular number. In the Town of Yarmouth case, we're designing our wastewater treatment plant to treat 3.54 million gallons a day, and that's the number that we need to manage to. What that means is there's 725, approximately 725,000 gallons of additional flow available for that, that growth, that redevelopment. But it's a number that we are required to manage to in order to get the beneficial 0% loans from DEP. Just a quick update. As we do these presentations, you know, people occasionally say, hey, I remember that the Town of Yarmouth was looking into the DHY agreement and working with Dennis and Harwich. What's up with, with that? We did look at that for a number of years, approximately four years, and it was determined that the other towns weren't on quite as aggressive schedule for developing wastewater as Yarmouth. And we all know that cost, that time is money, and that the longer we wait, in order to do a program, the more costly it will be. So back in August of 2021, the Board of Selectmen gave us the direction to develop a treatment facility within Yarmouth on Buck Island Road, and to look at that for our first phase. As we get into the future phases, and this is an eight-phase program, I'll cover that in a moment, but as we look at those future phases, we'll look at additional opportunities to work with our neighbors Barnstable and, and Dennis on a more regional approach to some of those areas. But certainly dealing with that first phase is something that we need to do quickly. It is a costly phase. It is a $207 million program. That's what Article 18 at Town Meeting is for, but that's for our first phase, which we'll talk about here in a moment. I think it's important to highlight some recent accomplishments. This is not something that has just happened overnight. Actually, back in 2020, at the annual town meeting, the town appropriated $5.25 million for design of a wastewater collection system. That is our Phase 1. That essentially is pipes in the ground for that first phase of our program. Then back in 2020, the special town meeting established a municipal water infrastructure investment fund. That's also referred to in some of the charts that you'll see as that CPA surcharge repurposing. That's that 0.78% that's going to help us pay for a portion of the program. Then in 2021, at the annual town meeting, a wastewater enterprise fund was established, and funds were put into that. The balance currently is just under $1.7 million. That will allow us to pay for operations and maintenance and ongoing costs associated with the system. Then in 2021 as well, $4.5 million was appropriated for design for the treatment plant. So now we've got that second component of the overall program for the treatment plant at Buck Island Road, and that's under design currently. In 2022, at the annual town meeting, the wastewater infrastructure stabilization fund was created, and that allows us a fund in which to play some of those short-term rental taxes and other funds to help pre-fund the program for wastewater. Also in 2022, the district improvement financing program was, the first step was taken. Another couple of highlights are also the notice of project change. Our major permitting component for the project was approved by the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Agency in September of 2022. And then in January of '23, Yarmouth was ranked number one on the intended use plan in the state's revolving loan fund program, and that's going to get us the 0% interest on the loans, as well as some debt forgiveness as part of that program. And that's just recognition from the state saying, hey, you've got the most critically important project that, that we have. We have no wastewater infrastructure in Yarmouth, and there's acknowledgement that our program adding that is critically important. There also needs to be a nutrient removal component to be ranked that high in the program, and Yarmouth has that with removing nitrogen. You'll also hear some information in a little while about the district improvement financing So I've referred to this wastewater program that we have. It's an eight-phase program. It is approved by the Department of Environmental Protection, and each phase is approximately five years. And the graphic you're seeing on the screen now, each color represents a phase. The first phase is, you'll see the slide in a moment, but is primarily this Route 28 corridor, a little bit of Old Main Street, as well as South Shore Drive. So the Phase 1 map, this is the subject of Article 18 at Town Meeting, is a large request. It's the $207 million. And because it's such a large project, in order to break that down into manageable chunks, we've divided that into six contracts. Contract 1 is in the center of the screen there. That's the wastewater treatment plant on Buck Island Road. Contract 2 is what's shown in yellow here, and that's a portion of Route 28 and Old Main Street and some of the roads in between. Contract 3 is shown in green. That's another portion of Route 28, both those being to the east of the Parkers River Bridge, and then South Shore Drive here as well. There is a pump station on South Shore Drive that's associated with this contract. That pump station will collect the wastewater and pump it back up into the gravity backbone system, which is essentially what we're calling this along Route 28. It's the large pipe that the wastewater from all future phases will flow into. Then Contract 4 is a contract that we're working with Mass DOT on as part of the Bass River Bridge replacement project. That's scheduled to be advertised in January of 2024. It also does include some intersection work and roadwork just immediately to the west of the bridge. Then Contract 5 is shown in orange here. This is another project that we're looking to work with Mass DOT on in order to install water as well as wastewater utility along that corridor. And there are two, actually three pump stations that are associated with this project as well that we're calling Contract 6, because those pump stations have to be done outside of the Mass DOT project. They're only going to coordinate work that's under the roadway in which they're improving. If it's outside of that road, as the pump stations are, that's a separate contract that we'll be managing. So those are the six contracts associated with Phase 1. Bob, is this the piece you want to take over on?
Great jumping off point. Thank you very much, Jeff. Much appreciated. And as, as you can see from the preceding slides, this is certainly a large problem for the town, and we have a lot at stake, both financially and environmentally, to get this cleanup started. And, and now's the time that we need to do it. What I'd like to do is to give you an overview of some of the financing sources and the financial plan that we're putting together to match this project. And then after that, we're going to have Bill take us through some of the nitty-gritty details of how some of those individual assessments specifically work, and hopefully be able to interact with any questions and issues. So obviously, in addition to all of the engineering and design work that we've been through as a community, we've spent a great deal of time putting together an integrated financial management plan that is specifically designed to try to limit the amounts required to be contributed by local residents and property owners. We've taken great strides to do that by leveraging several key different funding sources, and some of them are listed out here. What we have been able to do by putting this financial program together with a number of sources is eliminate the need for a general property tax increase for this project, despite the, the large cost of the project, and still fully fund the project. In addition, we're going to talk about betterment assessments, which are the primary vehicle for local property owners to contribute to the project. And it's going to be important, we're going to see how the betterment assessments to individual properties in Phase 1 have been limited to 15% of the overall project cost, which we're going to see is, is going to equal out to $15,000 for a betterment for a standard two-to-three-bedroom home in town. Now, what I mean by betterments is the charge that is made to an individual property for the value of this special benefit that they receive from the construction of this improvement for the wastewater, that, that value. And I want to mention that in surveying other projects similar throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's very common for betterments to be assessed at 50% of the project cost. In our project, we're going to see that the betterments are only 15%. Now, a 50% assessment would be $50,000 per house, and we've been able to limit that to 15, and that's something that, you know, has been remarked upon by the consultants. that we've had looking at over the finances to make sure everything is lined up with this project. I do want to point out also, Jeff mentioned, that if the town doesn't move forward with this project, the new regulations that the Department of Environmental Protection has proposed would require each individual property to install an innovative and alternative septic system. And I just want to point out is that we've contacted local contractors for estimates on those systems today. They're in excess of $50,000 per system with over $2,500 in annual costs to maintain those systems. So we can see comparing this project to a, just a standard, normal wastewater projects that are done in other areas, or the alternative of going with the DEP regulations, installing these alternative innovative systems. There's a tremendous cost savings in this program that we've put together using all of our community resources together to leverage funds to assist local homeowners. So it's the application of, of these multiple financing sources that, that gets it done. And I want to-
You, you might want to mention here, for the sake of continuity, how the length of time over which somebody will be able to pay that betterment, and in the event of a sale, they may be able to pass off the remainder that is owed on the betterment.
That's a great point that we're talking about as we, we move into the chart that shows the allocation. You see the, the betterment piece in white on, on your left. It's at 14.55%, just under 15% of the project. And if that's on a standard two-bedroom home, an assessment of $15,000. The other issue is that working together as a town, we'll be able to have local property owners take advantage of the town's ability when you assess a betterment. Last year, we adopted a betterment term of up to 30 years. And at this town meeting, we're going to adopt new provisions of, of the betterment law that allow us to limit the interest rate on betterments to up to 2% over what the town borrows funds for. And a key part of our funding for this project is we are going to take advantage of the state revolving fund wastewater loans at 0% interest. So the final interest cost will be between 0 and 2% for, for local homeowners. So there, with these betterments, total of $15,000, there's no upfront costs. The entire amount or a portion of it can be funded over 30 years at historically low rates of, rates of interest. So the use of the, the betterment and a limited betterment to be the primary vehicle for local residences to take advantage of having the wastewater, really, they combine together to make a fairly powerful tool. And you might ask, how are we able to limit that, you know, from the 50%, which is a standard project, down to that 15%? And it's, it's really a very simple premise that as we leverage all of the available funds, we apply them all first with the sole purpose of trying to reduce specifically that amount that we would have local folks pay. And one area that we've been tremendously successful in is leveraging tourism revenue that we receive as a community as a primary funding source for this project. And I, I think it's a very appropriate action to take where the town of Yarmouth is a vacation destination. Our tourism revenues are, are very strong. What we've done, and, and the Board of Selectmen have done, is taken the two, let's go back to this chart here, and I wanted to show the two largest funding sources in this pie chart. And it's very easy to see it. At 18.53% of the overall project are the short-term rental revenues that the town receives from vacation rentals. In addition to that, 24.8% of the overall financing of the project comes from the Cape Cod Water Protection Trust, which is funded through the additional 2.75% excise surcharge on vacation rentals. So between the short-term rentals that are received directly by the town and the short-term rental income from vacation homes that goes into the Cape Cod Water Protection Trust, that equals, it's 42%, 42.1% of the total project cost. So what we see happening here is we've taken great care to utilize those tourism revenues to subsidize the overall cost of the project, based with some of the impact and stress on infrastructure that all of these visitors have, in a very appropriate way that shares the burden of the cost among vacation rentals and also local property owners in a way that is much more equitable than simply an assessment over all of the, the properties. We also have another creative way of avoiding overall property tax increases is you could see the, the 5.5, 6% of the funding program is district improvement financing, which we created at the last town meeting. And Phase Two of that, to finalize that program, will be at the upcoming town meeting. And the purpose of the district improvement financing is Jeff mentioned, the pent-up investment, private investment in the Phase One district as a result of having no infrastructure. So when the infrastructure's in, we expect there to be some new growth. It will have limits, but the new growth that occurs in Phase One, just that Phase One commercial corridor district, any new tax revenues, not existing, but the new growth tax revenues, will be placed in a special fund to fund the wastewater infrastructure. And in that way, we can reserve the general property taxes for the primary services of education, highway, police, fire. And voters will not see a general property tax increase. And other funding sources that, that assist in that, you can see, I, I want to talk about 10% of this project is being funded by our wastewater investment fund that we created by shifting 1% of the community preservation tax that is currently on properties has been shifted from community preservation to wastewater. So as you can see, each of these funding sources go together to limit the key amounts that will be paid by local property owners, which will be the, the betterment that we have here at roughly 15%. And there is an additional, the operation and maintenance of the plant will be funded on wastewater bills that will average for a single-family home between $600 to $800, depending on what your usage is. And there's a 25% capital surcharge that is based solely on the individual use of the system that is the second O&amp;M surcharge that comprises the funding mix. So what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Bill Scott to provide a little more detail on the betterment piece and how that factors into the funding program, and then we can open it up for questions.
So I'm going to pick up from where Bob left off and pull one of those pies out on betterments and explain how that works. So we're going to stay in the presentation for the next two slides and then go to the betterment model directly after that. So as Bob said, each one of these represents a different funding source. So each one of those represents a different column in the funding source, and each one of those columns represents another analysis. So in that analysis, our numbers look at, and this is, you know, our initial findings in betterment, and how the betterment is broken up by land use. And there are, in the table I'll show you, there are quite a few land uses in the DEP table that we use. And that table is essentially a model that the state requires equivalent dwelling unit, and I'll go over that later. But as you can see, right now, our numbers are telling us that motel, hotel is 44.38% and then single-family is 17.53%, multifamily 15.88%. And, and the demarcation on the land uses is based on the Board of Health, so in their permitting system. So typically, you would look at this and say, how does that relate to assessing records? But because the DEP table comes from DEP and is based on those flows and those standards, we're using the health department's permitting to define what a multifamily is, because it's different than how assessing defines it. So we're making sure that we stick to the sort of appropriate demarcations, as it were, to make sure that we're putting the correct items and the correct land uses. So the advantage of the model we're using, though, is that as Bob indicated, we're looking at $15,000 for a single-family home, and then it is a proportionate share model that each one of these land uses, based on their flow, based on that table from DEP, and I'll show you in a minute, contributes proportionate share. So the easiest way to put it is, if five people go out to dinner, they get something different off the menu and they have different pricing, they have a proportionate share of the bill based on that pricing. So it's not necessarily based on flow here. It is based on making sure each group gets an equivalent fee, and that's a fixed fee over the 30 years. So it's going to take a minute for me to get the table up. So this table is from DEP's statutory table 310 CMR 15.203. And it lists land uses and flow per land use, gallons per day, per unit. So the important aspect to this is that per unit. So in this case, what the statute requires is that we create an equivalent dwelling unit. So they want us to base betterments, unless we write special legislation, off of the dwelling unit category. So the top part, the green, represents that equivalent dwelling unit. And the DEP table takes a single-family home and puts that flow at 330. If we import a value of $15,000 there, then that equivalent dwelling unit is divided into each one of these numbers. So 110 from 330 gets you the .33. So a one-bedroom in a multifamily is essentially equivalent to a one-bedroom in a single-family in this case. So that would mean that it would be $5,000 per unit in over 30 years. It'd be $167 per year for the one-bedroom. So a two fam, a two-bedroom multifamily unit would be another $5,000, and a three-bedroom unit would be another $5,000. So as you go down the table and you look at each one of those uses, you're using that equivalency, or proportionate share, as it were, to create the multipliers to create each one of these uses. So this sheet is where we come up with our numbers, and here's some of our values in single-family in to, in terms of our total revenues, in multifamily, hotel, motel, office buildings, restaurant. So as you can see, though, that there is a lot of work put into this to get it accurate. You know, where a restaurant is per seat, multifamily is per bedroom, there are other categories that are per person attending an event. And so we're working effectively with the assessing department, and we check some of these numbers with health, with some of their permits, and also with the building department to make sure that we're using the correct categories and the correct multipliers to come up with these numbers. So the advantage is that we can, as Bob indicated, by virtue of going and looking at all the other categories first, all the other funding sources, and saying, here's our gap. The betterment now is the gap and not the major contributor to the entire process. So if we, and, and in doing this, as we did that, don't have a keyboard, but if I were to change that number, all the other numbers would change in the model. So as we were looking at revenue from the other sources, we were able to say, okay, it's not 17, it's not 16, and we hit 15, and we were hitting our targets for the 15% of the total progress, project. There's another model for the project, which allows us to do the same thing and put in numbers to try to hit those targets. So it really goes back to that pie chart you saw, and I'll go back to the presentation unless you want a further explanation on this.
I just had one question.
Sure.
Is, is the payback on that a flat number? Is it, is it exclude an interest charge, or does it calculate in the 2%?
There's no interest charge in that number.
So that'd be a little bit higher than that.
Yeah.
Assuming a 2% rate.
Yeah, and it would decline over time based on the interest. So-
Thanks.
That was my question.
Okay. Right. So we put it in there because it is, as we approach the assessment of betterments, we'll know better what we want to use for an interest rate. And I think as Bob said, we are, we're looking at a cap of 2%. So we're not, we know we're not going over that.
If that other article passes.
That, that's right. And, and the key takeaway is, with the 30-year betterment period, the annual cost for a, a property owner for a single-family home would be approximately $500, plus if there's any interest charge on that. So that is far less than just the maintenance on, on one of the IA systems. You know, we're hoping that, that that's an affordable rate. It's, it's an expensive project. It's, it's a far-reaching project. But I, I think through the multiple financing sources, we've been able to, to place it in, I think, a very affordable realm as long as it's done over time.
And, and in some of our other land uses, we're looking at restaurants, the number is less than what you would install. We're hearing in restaurants, a number of a septic system of 250,000, and it's replaced more frequently than 10 years. If this is a 30 years, we're looking at numbers for a reasonably-sized restaurant that's less than the replacement of that septic system. So if they have to go through that process of replacing it every 10 years or whatever, we're sort of paying for that once. So I think that's a distinct advantage, and, and I think the way we look at that, if you were explained to a prospective purchaser of your home, the nitrate system, you explain, well, there's a manual, there's inspections, there's an operating cost, and I'll give you all that on the sale of the home. If you explain after being connected to sewer, the person asks, are you connected to sewer? Yes. So that's a pretty big difference in terms of obligation if you choose to sell your property, what you're giving the next property owner, and if, you know, if you're in your property, the obligation of yourself, that, you know, some of these numbers work out that it's less than the monitoring and, and other costs if you had the nitrate system. So let me go back to the presentation unless there's anything on this. So as we've been doing the modeling, we have the advantage of being able to determine what the allocations by land use are, and we're looking for that equity. Obviously, to wrap up the betterment, supermarkets not having a lot of bathrooms and not having a lot of use, even though you have a big building, they're not really a contributor or to the sewer system. But hotels, motels, single families, restaurants do have those higher multipliers or their equivalent unit numbers. So we believe that using the DEP table as sort of- table as sort of guidance and sticking to that, there's other models out there in other towns that don't have a rational nexus like that, means that we know we are charging an equivalent fee across all the land uses. And going back to this, the other things, the diff and other parts of the pie, all have this sort of background. The diff has a definitive, as you saw at the last meeting analysis, that shows what we believe that five point five six will come from. The advantage of the diff is, as people connect to sewer, then you're going to see growth that we didn't anticipate, because developers weren't coming forward during the diff process. We think that that number is going to increase more than what we're projecting based on information from developers. But each one of these, as we saw in the report, and we'll be updating the report to you, that each one of these has a different specific funding source and calculations and everything behind it, each one of those pies. So I don't know where we, the next one is a project breakdown, is that?
Let's turn it back to Jeff to bring us home here.
All right. Thank you very much. So this slide here is a project breakdown. How much has been spent on engineering so far? I went through previously what the approvals were as far as town meeting and what those costs are, and this is how much we've spent on engineering so far. Just under seven million dollars is committed with, through our design process. And then a breakdown of the full cost for that two-hundred-and-seven million dollars, two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand amongst the six contracts I mentioned, that's, you can see on the screen here. I won't read that breakdown to you, but you can see that the lion's share of that is in the wastewater treatment plant itself of almost one hundred and twenty-six million dollars. And the various contracts are there as well. So that's a breakdown. We can come back and look at that if there's any questions about that, but just to give a little more detail behind the numbers. So next steps, every time we do one of these presentations, questions are, when is construction starting? What does that look like? So we have a table here that really shows kind of what that looks like. We do have two of the contracts that are under, that are out for bid right now, contracts two and three. We do expect to have bids in hand for town meeting, so that we can have real numbers associated with those two contracts, that we can then apply to the other contracts that aren't quite ready for bid, to make sure that we have some support behind what those numbers are. They're not just engineered estimates. We'll have some real values behind that. The wastewater treatment plant is at the sixty percent design stage. We just received those plans and specifications this week. We do expect that in the November timeframe, that we'll be able to put that project out to bid as well. That's the biggest of the contracts, but that's moving forward quickly. A little more detail on what the other contracts look like, one through six is on the screen there as well. We will be seeing, once the funds are approved from Article eighteen, construction beginning fairly quickly. Again, contracts two and three, having a bid in hand, we can award that quickly after town meeting, with construction on those two expected after Labor Day. So we don't do roadwork between Memorial Day and Labor Day. It's prohibited along Route twenty-eight by Mass DOT, because of all the increased traffic and, as can be expected in the summertime. But we do expect that immediately after Labor Day, we will start work on those two contracts, two and three, and the other contracts will be following shortly thereafter. You can see from the slide here, construction starting in early two thousand twenty-four, as it would be at the wastewater treatment facility, and then wrapping up construction at the wastewater treatment facility and the other contracts by June of two thousand twenty-six is the approximate timeframe we're looking at. So it is a project that's moving along very aggressively as far as the schedules go. Construction on this, a large project of this size does take some time, and those are pretty aggressive construction schedules as well. So that's a summary of next steps, and certainly open it up to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jeff, and Bill, and Bob. Start with Peter.
It's a huge project, and I'm glad to see that a number of the contracts are out for bid, and we'll get them online, because, you know, I'd love to see a shovel hit the ground and get moving. I think, I mean, I've seen this presentation several times. Obviously, this is an update. And I think you've done a great job of outlining, and Mr. Scott outlining where the money's going to come from, and Bob, where the money's going to come from and stuff, and that it should not, and hopefully will not, hit the individual tax bill. So I think it's very good, very well put together, and extremely important for the town to do. So please, when you attend, when you attend town meeting, when you're looking at eighteen, it is expensive, but it's much less expensive than if you have to do this individually. So I would, I'm going to do one political stand here. You know, please vote for number eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Darcus?
Pretty much just saying the same things that Peter would say, and how important it is that people do come out for town meeting and support this article. I want to say, between the three of you, you've put together an excellent presentation. I think this one is, if we can spread this as far as we can throughout the town for people to see, they'd be prepared. One of the things I would suggest to you is, you might look at, you've got three senior living communities in this town. You might look at whether or not, now that the COVID restrictions are lightening, that they may be willing to have you come in and speak to their residents. Between the three collectively, you've probably got about five hundred residents of town. But thank you very much. I think this answers all of my questions.
Thank you, Darcus. Mark?
Thank you. I would have to say, a tremendous amount of information has been pulled together in a relatively short period of time to really give us a handle in terms of the finances. I think that's, that's what's impressive to me, is we're at a point now where we can have a really, we have a really good handle on the cost and how we're paying for this. I think now the next step is to focus on a very aggressive public education campaign, getting to various groups, getting out in the community, and to be able to take questions and hear what residents have to say, to find out what their questions are, what their concerns are, so that we can find ways to address them. I think what's critical here is going light on the residences. And I know, I mean, I've talked about this in the past, is that the county now has a brand-new financing program, the Aqua Fund, that can assist with financing of sewer hookups. And in the cases where people do have to upgrade septic systems, there's some help there. The other uncertainty is, we're not going to know, really, what the status of DEP's regulations are, what we're all facing, I think. But I do think it's safe to say that something's coming down the pike, and it's going to be somewhat problematic for many folks. And no matter how you add up the costs, the reality is the town's solution, the town's approach provides a significant cost benefit and differential for the community. So it seems like what the state's doing is, they're basically saying you can go it alone. So if we don't do anything as a municipality, what people are facing is a fairly significant upgrade on their septic systems at a fairly significant cost. What did you say the numbers were, fifty thousand roughly?
In that fifty thousand dollar range is the numbers we're getting from contractors, right?
Incredible amount of money. And let me ask you this question. I mean, in the beginning, when these regulations came out, many people were raising questions about whether or not these IA systems would even do the job, would even perform. Do we know anything more about that? Are there still doubts about whether or not these systems would even work?
Well, these systems remove nitrogen, but the bottom line is, there's none that are proven to remove nitrogen to the levels that we need to do that. So the only way to do that is through a centralized treatment facility. So that's really a concern about going down that road of innovative alternative systems, is they still don't work as effectively as we're required to. I went through some numbers earlier about the amount of septic systems that need to be removed from each one of those watersheds, and that's a pretty big number. And just to add an innovative alternative component doesn't get us there.
So what we may find is, is that we might find sustained regulatory pressure on homeowners. So as new technologies come in, we may find that you get this added burden placed on homeowners to even upgrade even further. Is that a fair?
That's a fair assessment.
Which could even be, you know, if the cost we're getting right now is an individual septic system upgrade is fifty thousand dollars, and that's what people are forced into, and we find out through monitoring that we're not getting the reduction in nitrogen that, from a regulatory point of view, we're supposed to get, then the burden of coming up to standard is largely put on the homeowner. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do we know what the monitoring costs are for a homeowner? So let's say, I mean, I'm forced, I've got to upgrade my septic system, fifty thousand dollars. What are my, what are my costs likely to be for monitoring?
It is variable, because it does depend on the type of innovative alternative systems. I mean, we keep throwing that term out there, but that's really a group of treatments, and there's at least a dozen that are proven through DEP to be able to be applied. So it depends on the type of innovative alternative system, but they're all in the neighborhood of two thousand dollars a year, maybe even a little bit more on some systems, for maintenance and monitoring and reporting to DEP about how they're functioning.
My understanding is, some of these, these systems may be expensive to actually operate. Is there any truth to that? Are these relatively inexpensive, or are they?
I would say they're all, they're all fairly costly in the sense that they need additional energy utilities. They're all having an electrical component to it. So our first phase is primarily all gravity connections. Very few people will have an electricity component associated with connecting to a centralized wastewater system. But they will, for innovative alternative systems, have blowers and fans and motors and pumps, electricity costs associated with operation.
So with all that equipment, is there also a noise factor, I would assume, as well?
Most of those are below ground, but it is a component, potentially.
Yeah. Do we know how many systems, I see Jay Gardner's here. Do we know how many IA systems have been installed in Yarmouth? And do we have any idea of whether or not any of them are even working? We don't have that information. I think that might be information that might be helpful to have, because I think this is going to be a question a lot of homeowners will ask. I know that, I think we, as a board, had made a very clear, expressed our concerns about the lack of wisdom behind these regulations. But everything I'm hearing is, is that they're intent on doing something, and so that's a real concern. Getting back to our plan to put in front of the voters, I think, I think a great deal of additional work has been done. I think it's terrific. I'm looking forward to a board discussion on outreach, upcoming forums, meetings, how we can get word out. I'm sure whether we, maybe we get that at this meeting or maybe at the next meeting, but I think obviously that's the priority at this point. And I just want to commend the group for all of its work.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make one quick comment?
Even though, yeah, I did have a couple people that are raising their hands in the audience that may have questions. Tom Sullivan, why don't you come up, and then I'll go to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom Sullivan, precinct one. The two-hundred-thousand-dollar figure in Phase One we're quoting, is that got a built-in inflation figure to it? Is that a set figure? I mean, with the present inflation we have in the country, which is average?
Two-hundred-and-seven, you said thousand. We wish. You mean million?
Two-hundred-and-fifty million.
Okay.
It's two-hundred-and-seven million.
So do I. I wish it was thousand. Two-hundred-and-fifty, whatever. Is there a built-in inflation factor in that figure with the average cost today with the inflation average right now running about six percent for cost of materials? And two, the contracts that are going out, are they going to be binding contracts on price, or is there going to be flexibility? So if they come in with a price overrun, cost of materials?
Good question. Before we go to Jeff, there's an inflation factor for delay, too. And there's a bigger inflation factor for the cost of doing nothing. When we were first starting a discussion on a tri-town solution, we were talking about a hundred and sixty million dollars. And in the time that has elapsed since then, that figure has increased to two-hundred-and-seven million dollars. So that's just an initial comment. Jeff, you want to say anything else on that to answer his questions?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two-hundred-and-seven million dollars is based upon the cost estimate for all of Phase One, and that was required when we filed with the State Revolving Fund to be escalated to the midpoint of construction, which is expected to be two thousand twenty-four. And so there is already some escalation built in to that number. But the good news is that in the next couple of weeks, we will have actual hard numbers for two of those contracts, and those are committed dollar numbers for the construction, for two contracts. So it won't be all six contracts, but two of the contracts will be locked in in the next couple of weeks.
Did you hear that, Tom?
I heard it.
Okay. He's saying those two are going to be a lock. And we probably, I guess by omission, we have to wait until we get those other contracts to see whether there's going to be any escalation that's occurred or not. Chris?
Christine Greeley, West Yarmouth. I have a couple of questions, and maybe just because of my idiocy, I'm not understanding. The first has to do, are the betterment charges going to be on all properties in the town, whether or not you're in the phase going in? And the second one was, will the betterment percent interest rate change with the various phases as it goes along?
I can answer that question.
Okay. Thank you.
And the betterments are associated with the improvements only. So right now, we're talking about Phase One.
Okay. So just the properties included in that area, the Phase One. So it won't be my house if I'm in Phase Six or something. Okay. Thank you.
That's correct. And the second question is, the interest rate will be fixed. And when we take advantage of the adoption of that state law, that sets it at up to two percent over what the town borrows at. Now, we're assuming for subsequent phases, and it's worth mentioning, because there's a several-year gap between each phase. And we're assuming that the State Revolving Loan Fund Program, which is an enormous benefit to the town, will remain where the town is eligible to receive zero percent financing. And as long as we can keep that financing rate for the town low, that is translated directly to the property owner. So if we can keep the zero percent, that answer is yes.
That's great. The only other concern I've ever had is that, obviously, living down on the shores of Lewis Bay, and the fact that Lewis Bay is named as a significant area of concern, sort of wondering, you know, where in the phases we're going to be, because some of those numbers have been fairly large in terms of our phase over the period of time. And so that's my only concern, you know, as someone looking at this project. And I do support what we're going forward and doing. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, Chris. Just a couple other general comments on betterments. A betterment has to benefit the person to whom it's assessed. So you can't just go sprinkling betterments around to neighborhoods that don't have the benefit of a sewer hookup. The other thing that I think people have to think about is, forget DEP's regs, just take the status quo as it exists today, and let's assume that DEP is not going to require you to upgrade your systems. These things have a useful life, and then they fail, and then you have to replace them. So at that point in time, even as we stand today, a homeowner is going to probably have to come up with somewhere with engineered plans in a septic system, at least fifteen thousand dollars. Not for an INA system, but just for what they have now. So you've got to be thinking that, once you have a betterment assessed against you and you have the benefit of a sewer hookup, you're not going to incur those costs. You're going to be able to budget it over a very long period of time at a very low rate of interest, which really shouldn't significantly affect homeowners.
Right. Right. I've got a comment, Mr. Chairman. Although, there's, I'm sorry, there's a hand in the audience. I'll defer.
Yes, Peter.
The various financing components, you had the short-term rentals, the income from short-term rentals. short-term rentals. Wasn't that the place where the, if not all, but a good portion of that was dedicated to the police department at some point back when? Is that going...
No. We've dedicated and are already devoting the short-term rental tax to the wastewater, so there are no restrictions on those funds. And through this program, I think, you know, what I mentioned, I think one of the key benefits of using short-term rental, avoiding a general property tax increase, is that the property tax levy is reserved for the primary core services, public safety, police, fire, education, and we won't have additional wastewater on the general tax.
I just thought that when we went back to, this would go back when we first instituted, you know, or increased the tax on those short-term rentals, or maybe there was something else, but there was some component that really went to...
The ferry fees. We've...
What fees?
The fees that the town collects as a portion of what's collected at the ferry boats, that is reserved for public safety, and that's the only funds that we have. But it's an outside fund. It comes in, and there's a portion on every ticket that folks travel to the islands that impacts our port, because, you know, we share the port with Hyannis. So those funds are restricted towards the public safety.
I thought there was some tax that, or funds that... Okay, so as you may have heard, the town of Barnstable has moved along in laying down all kinds of pipes in their town, and I guess it was more than one. They would dig up the roads and lay something down and cover up the road again and come back a little while later and dig it up again. And in any event, the upshot of it is that at least one of those pipes was not laid in the correct position, apparently. And they either have to raise it or lower it. I don't remember which one, but they have to dig up again. So what I'm saying is, is there going to be a project manager, somebody who's going to oversee these things when they start, you know, and hope that you can learn from what happened there? I mean, I don't understand why something like that would have happened, because they've got quite a bit of mileage that they've already laid, and now they have to go back and rip up the roads and lower or heighten one of the pipes, I guess, that they had.
Jeff's going to respond to that.
Yes, we have a pretty robust team in place. We have an owners' project manager. We have a design team that's working through some of these issues that's familiar with some of the challenges that Barnstable's having. Barnstable is in a different position in that they are essentially doing most of that work, the project managing, the design in-house. We have consultants, that's their core expertise, that are helping us to avoid these issues.
I hope so. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else out there?
Mr. Chairman.
We go to Peter.
Yeah, I got...
I saw Peter in my purple...
I got two quick comments on betterments. The town has voted to go from a 20-year betterment to a 30-year betterment, which obviously lowers the annual cost to the, cost to the individual homeowner and/or business. In addition, at the time, if you were to sell your property right now, and there's a betterment on it, it has to be paid in full, and it is assumable by the buyer. So you do not have to pay it off in full at the time. Also, in terms of innovative systems on Pappanessen Bay, there's a whole bunch going on right now, and there could be some look to see how well those are handling. And Pappanessen Bay is probably the worst embayment on the Cape, given the density of the shallow water that's there. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Peter. Mark.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, could you do me a favor and go back to the slide showing Phase One, the actual physical layout of that? Yeah, I think it's important. Chris Greeley made a very, very important observation, and that is that all this discussion of costs and betterments really applies to the project area, the area that's defined as Phase One. And I think it's important to remind people that if you don't live in Phase One, if you don't live within that area where the, which is the subject of the sewer ring, then you're not going to be paying anything. So all this discussion of betterments and how it affects you really is not an issue.
And you're not going to be getting the benefit either.
That's true. I'm not suggesting, but I think it's important to understand, no, for the people that are watching at home and people that are trying to follow this, I think it's really important to understand what is going to impact them and what isn't. So the discussion about the cost, the charges, really does not impact the people outside of the colored area on the map, and I think that's an important... We tend to sort of quickly touch on that, but I think, I'm glad she flagged it, because I think that's something that we just need to continually emphasize and not allow to get lost on people.
And the bulk of the cost is going to be, for the spine going down Route 28 is going to be on the commercial portion of the town. Anyone else? No? Okay, well, thank you very much for the presentation. We can't get enough of this. The more information you get, the better it is, and it's, even though we've heard portions of this, it's also good to review it and dig a little deeper with the questions that we get from our citizens.
One last thing. Thank you, but one last thing. Weren't we also talking about a brochure that was going to be available to people?
We're going to get into that.
Yes, there's a brochure and a mailing, and we're distributing the brochure townwide. It's already, some material has gone out to every neighborhood association in the town, and we're enlisting the presidents of those associations to distribute it to every single household as well. And also, we can talk later about some of the public meetings we'll have.
So we're going to get a little bit more into that with town administrator updates.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
We have a big communications piece.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Very well done.
All the hard work.
Okay. Review and final recommendation on warrant articles. We have a petitioned article to consider, and we have a presenter of that article who's Tom Sullivan, and it deals with the chapter, Town Bylaw Chapter 142. And which article is that?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Let's all turn to thirty-six. At our last, at our last meeting, we had the, this article that passed, and if I understand correctly, Tom, your petitioned article seeks to amend a couple of provisions and have them stricken from the bylaw. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So why don't you just tell us a little bit about what it is you would like to have the town meeting do with respect to that article?
Okay, well, I go back into a little history. This came in in November. It was part of our water emergency plan, and during town meeting, I happened to read it thoroughly. I was surprised to see this in the article, and so were all the other people. They didn't know this was in the article. So I did try to amend it. We went to a vote. It was a close vote. It lost. But encouraging, afterwards, I've talked to people about this. They want to try to, you know, address it a second time. They asked me how to do it, so I told them, we could do it by petition article. We only need 10 signatures. So I started the petition. Took about a half a day. I ended up almost 20 signatures. So we only needed 10, so I submitted it. Now, today, the last few days, I've been talking to people, and a lot of people in town don't know about this. They have sprinkler systems on their properties. And I've caught some comments, some I can't repeat. Okay. But some of the comments, and this is how I feel, it's basically intrusion on property, private property, under Massachusetts law and everything else.
Tom, can we back up for a second?
Sure.
When you say intrusion, you're talking about the first section. Let's break this down.
Okay, this will be the first section.
First section of the bylaw that you're seeking to have eliminated is that it says, quote, "All automatic lawn sprinkler systems connected to the municipal water supply shall be registered with the DPW Water Division. A fee may be charged for this registration. Registration fee shall be set by the Board of Water Commissioners." So that's the first part of the bylaw that you want to see stricken. So let's talk to that portion first.
Okay. Question is, why do we have to pay a fee? Some of these lawn sprinkler systems go back 20, 30 years. Okay? I have a newer system. I'll be honest with you, I run mine with an app. Okay? I control the water through an app. The EPA has a program for water systems, especially sprinklers. It's called the WaterSense System. And an item came up at town meeting, the question was backflow. There was a question about the backflow problem within these systems. Well, backflows are regulated by plumbing regulations. I believe one of our plumbers in town spoke to that at a town meeting. I did a little research further than, and I found that the DEP has regulation, seventeen pages. In here, it's called Cross Connection Control Program Regulations. That's 310 CMR 22 dot 22. And in here, and this goes back to almost 2017, this was an update, the last update, it does mention irrigation systems, but it doesn't say what type, whether they're commercial or the residential. But it does have in here what they recommend for backflow regulators. So when you have a system put in, you're going to have a backflow regulator put in your sprinkler system. Okay? It also states each case should be evaluated individually. We have backflow regulators in this building, in your sprinkler system, your fire system. I mean, it covers everything. Some of the people asked me, how did this come about and how did it get in there? So that's one of the questions that I would like to ask the board here or the town. How did that get put in in regards to the sprinkler systems? Why was it done? Why was it put in?
I think that's part of the DEP recommended bylaw.
Which one? Because I went through all of these laws on the general laws, right? And some of the DEP regulations deal with surface water. A lot of it does. But as far as sprinkler heads goes and registering with the town, what would be used? How would it be used if it was registered with the DPW?
Might as well ask the DPW.
Mr. Chairman, may I answer?
Yes, Jeff.
Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. Bob is absolutely correct. The bulk of the article was from the model DEP regulations with regards to irrigation and, you know, water conservation measures. So the bulk of it was modeled after that particular program. We tweaked a couple of things relative to references to Yarmouth and our particular circumstances, but for the most part, it's all what DEP recommends be part of a conservation policy.
Could I ask this question? And I'm trying to get, in part, Tom focused on his specific amendment. What is the purpose behind the registration of the system with the town? That seems to be what he's honing in on in his article amendment. Why, why do, how does that serve the purposes of water conservation, having it registered with the town, your sprinkler system? I mean, if we see Mr. Smith, whether he's registered or not, and we see water coming out of his sprinklers on a prohibited day, he's in violation, isn't he? Whether his system's registered or not? So I guess what I'm trying to get at and try to, you know, bring the focus to this amendment is, how does registration of the sprinkler system serve the purpose of, an intent of this bylaw?
Registration would allow us to know who has a sprinkler system. At this point, there's no registration for that, so we have no idea of who has a irrigation system or not. When we got into those measures with regards to, you know, what stage of drought we were in, we would have preferred if we had a list of who had the irrigation, to have sent something directly out saying, hey, we're at this stage, this is what applies as per the conservation policy. At this point, we don't have any idea who has a irrigation system or not. As was mentioned before, they are required to have a backflow prevention device on them, but it doesn't mean that everyone, you know, some people may have put in a kind of a homeowner's version, if you will, and may not have been done properly. We don't have any of those records. So at this point, having a registration system, at least we would know who we needed to outreach to educate, let them know what the proper way to do it is, what particular drought or conservation measures might apply to their particular circumstance. If we had a targeted list, we could target that outreach. At this point, we have to send it out to everyone, just because we don't know who does or doesn't have an irrigation system.
Okay.
So you just mentioned something about targeting people who have them. What about people who don't have them and water their launch through a hose system? How are they going to measure that? That actually uses more water than a sprinkler system. The sprinkler heads that the EPA recommends, and I probably have them, it's a fine mist. It is part of the water conservation program. You use less water. A sprinkler system can use less water than you will buy a watering device at a hardware store, hook it up to your hose. You're going to use more water. You know, this is targeting residents in the town, and I think it's very unfair.
Okay.
And I think a lot of the residents in the town are going, this comes out of town meeting, will think this is very unfair.
Okay. So on that, on the registration piece, do you have anything else to, any other arguments or...
The idea of a fee, is that going to be a one annual fee or, you know, yearly? Or is that going to be one time only?
Okay.
That hasn't been addressed.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I can answer that. There's no fee proposed this time. It was just in that DEP model bylaw that suggested it could be charged. So at some point, the water commissioners, which are yourself, could decide that's appropriate. At this point, we're not proposing a fee.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I want to bring up. Where does the town authority end and the private property owner's line begin? The water that comes into the house and comes through the water meter, we're paying for that. We are customers of the town of Yarmouth. The water we dispense, is the town going to tell us how to dispense the water that we are paying for? I mean, we have a right to use the sprinklers. I mean, it doesn't touch the emergency plan that you put in for water restriction. If we have a water restriction, yeah, you should abide by it. I believe he showed at the town meeting, where water reduction was remarkable this past summer, it showed on the graph how it came down. But where does the line, the town come for the town and come in? Because the water comes into the house, a plumber has to hook it up to your water system. They have to put a shut-off on it inside the house, plus it goes outside where your backflow is. I also have two shut-off valves in my box in the ground. And this was done by, one, an electrician, two, a plumber, and three, the landscaper. There were three people that did this on my lawn.
Jeff?
I think most other people are doing the same thing.
An important concept here, and I don't know that it's widely known, but the water provider, the town in this particular case, has a legal responsibility to provide clean water all the way to the user, including through the pipes, and making sure there's no contamination entering all the way to the user. Obviously, a big chunk of that is on private property, which we have very little control over, but DEP requires that we provide clean, quality water all the way to the user, including through the piping system on private property.
There's no argument about that, but the idea that it being registered, and you're targeting individuals in the town. Is this the homeowner also? What about the commercial businesses? Are they also included in this? Will they be targeted?
Well, commercial businesses, as far as I know, there's no distinction in the bylaw between commercial and private.
Right.
I would say the same thing applies to that.
Oh, the same thing, okay.
As far as I know, I haven't read the bylaw, but I don't remember when it was being discussed and vetted before the last meeting, any distinction being made between commercial and private users.
But we are paying for it.
Okay. Do you want to, just quickly, let's move on to the penalty part of it?
The penalty part of it...
So the penalty as it exists is first violation warning... So the penalty as it exists is first violation warning, second, a hundred dollars, third and subsequent three hundred dollars, each violation constituting a separate offense. And if it's, if I understand correctly, you wish to have that penalty provision removed?
Yes, I've had people who.
Just speak to that.
All right. I've had, when I did the petition, I originally only had the first part, but I put the second part in before I filed it because I had requests from residents in the town, because they spoke a town meeting. They also thought it was very high on the penalty part. Now, is the penalty part relating to not registering sprinkler systems? Or is the penalty part, part of not abiding by the emergency being, in other words, illegal watering? These are a couple of questions that I've received.
I'll just tell you, again, I don't have the total bylaw, but I, I thought that this penalty provision was going to relate to people who were using sprinkler systems on prohibited days. That's what I thought it was for.
That would be all sprinkler systems, including the ones you hook up with a hose.
I can't answer the ones you hook up with your hose part of it, but Jeff?
It, it would be for irrigation system violations such as watering on the prohibited days. Again, that would only kick in in the higher levels of that conservation plan. In the normal, you know, conditions which we're under right now, we don't have any drought on Cape Cod, that wouldn't apply. It would only be in those higher levels of drought.
Thank you.
But the other part.
Tom, let me ask you this question. Are you suggesting that the penalty provision should be totally eliminated?
I think it should be. I think.
What's the rationale for that?
The rationale is if you're going into a voluntary, most of this restriction is voluntary, then it should be voluntary. I mean, do the police officers have time to be running around? And it says by police officers here, running around checking to see who's got their lawns on? I don't think so. I think they got more in the hands than that. I think it will put extra stress on the other town employees on this. I mean, I think, we do have a lot of sprinklers in town. I did see some that were on during the restrictions. I'd also saw a, the park down here hooked up to a fire hydrant during the restriction, pouring water into the, the park here on Route 28. I didn't think that was right. But they could be warned, and I'm sure that they'll comply, but this is pretty restrictive. And it could end up in district court. Okay?
No, I mean, I would assume there's going to be a legal process for contesting fines. I don't, again, I'd have to look at the entire bylaw, but we have some time between town meeting and now to do that. I just kind of wanted to get an overview as to why you felt the penalty provision should be stricken. And so far, you're saying because you think this system should be voluntary compliance and therefore there should be no penalties.
Right. If a lady down the road had found out that maybe we did have a huge amount of people not complying, then fine, maybe, then maybe a penalty phase could come in a little bit lower. But I think majority of people in this town were doing it.
Okay.
I, I know I was doing it. I was doing watering only, but as I said, I, I have a new morgue system. Mine runs on an app in my house. I can actually hear, touch my app, and turn my water on right now if, if my sprinkler system was hooked up and run it. That's what you can do today. And it's, you can do it, and it conserves more water than by going out there and standing with a hose, watering your lawn and your flowers while buying a sprinkler system at a hardware store. They disperse a lot of water. And also, I just want to mention, on the sprinkler system itself, the sprinkler heads have in them, which is additional here, the sprinklers have a, what they call a maintained, a regulation pressure gauge inside, which actually regulates the water pressure in the nozzle of the lawn sprinkler.
What are you reading from town?
This is from the EPA.
Okay.
All right. And the EPA does admit that, yeah, well, nine billion gallons of water each day from landscaping is wasted water. But that's cut more than half with the irrigation system with the sprinkler heads. Because instead of, it's not like you see at the football field or the golf course. By the way, I think golf courses are exempt from this on the DEP, on this, on sprinklers. But you saw at the football field, you see the sprinklers coming out while the grass is passed summer. Those are entirely different than what most people have in their homes. So what, based on what I hear tonight, this is kind of discriminatory against people who have sprinkler heads. You know, lawn sprinkler systems. So I think this is time, you know, let's debate this at town meeting, bring it up and take a vote on it.
Okay. Anything else you want to say?
Nope, that's it.
Thanks very much for coming in and discussing your article, Tom. We have already decided that on the petitioned articles, the board is going to recommend from the floor.
Yeah, I saw that.
We're not going to take any vote prior to the night of the town meeting, when we have our meeting before the meeting.
Well, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Tom. This says exec, well, no, it doesn't. Yeah, it does. Execution of town meeting warrant, but before we do that, we got to go through some more articles.
That's correct. And in your packet, you'll see there is a handy, one-page list that lists the articles that the board still has to make recommendations.
We have that, a list of those?
There's a list of them, and they are Articles 10, 12, 13, 14, 16, 18, 19, 20, and 21. And in the warrant, make sure that you've got your town meeting warrant that has on the lower left-hand side, three twenty-eight, twenty-three. We caught a couple of punctuation errors, inserted the finance committee report, made it, I think, in final format, and.
I can't seem to find that. Is it the total list or just a list of the ones we haven't done?
It's the total list, but the ones without the.
On the right side?
Right. You see the blanks?
On the right?
The blanks. So it starts with Article 10.
Okay.
Which can be found on.
I got it.
Page eighteen of your warrant.
So why don't we do, why don't we do this? Since we just got done discussing wastewater, why don't we stick on those related articles?
That starts with eighteen.
And then work our way back. Wastewater is what, eighteen?
Article eighteen, which is.
Wastewater Phase One. Somebody, anybody want to make a motion on Article eighteen?
A move that we recommend.
I have a second.
Article eighteen.
Second.
Peter is not here. Is he coming right back? Should we vote or wait? Your call. What do you think?
I think it looks better if we all vote.
Okay. I think we're ready to go on eighteen. What's, there's another one on diff would be nineteen, that would be related. Interest rate for sewer betterments would be twenty would be related. And then I think we can go from the top down.
Here's Peter.
Peter. Peter, we have a motion by Mark to recommend Article eighteen, which is wastewater Phase One. And we have a second on that article. We're waiting for you for the actual vote. Do we have any discussion before we vote on Article eighteen? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes by a vote of four to zero, one member absent. And then I would like to get a, a motion to approve Article, to recommend Article nineteen, District Improvement Financing.
I make a motion to approve Article nineteen as written in the warrant.
Okay, we have a motion to vote favorably on nineteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes also by a vote of four in favor, zero against, one member absent. Do I have a motion to recommend Article twenty, interest rate for sewer betterments?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend Article twenty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have two seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of four in favor, zero against, one member absent. So that gets us through our wastewater articles. So we'll go up top now to Gulf Capital Expense, Article ten.
I'm happy to move this, but I think it would be helpful, just for the folks paying attention for today, maybe if we just had a brief discussion, it looks pretty straightforward. But I'd like to move that we recommend Article ten, Gulf Capital Expense.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to recommend Article ten.
Mr. Chairman, I can explain it if, if you wish.
Sure.
Well, it was just, as we were going through the process, we didn't move the Bayberry Clubhouse Phase Two over to the, to the warrant. So that was approved by the CIP and scheduled for this year. The Ford F-350 replaced truck, that had a catastrophic failure associated with its dump that rendered it completely unusable, and that occurred after the CIP process. It is in the CIP right now, and the cost estimate is relatively recent, so they need to replace the truck or get it into this town meeting because the order time is considerable. So those two items, the other two items, sustainability plan and the Gulf Five-Year Capital Plan, were already in there. And the two added items, one of them was a Bayberry Clubhouse Phase Two, and that's interior work. They're working on exterior right now, and they're doing it in phases, so they're not as disruptive to the use of the facility. And then the Ford F-350 is something that had a complete failure sometime after the CIP process. And the retained earnings is at the bottom, at over one million six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, so there's plenty of funds to cover these costs.
Any other, okay. All those in favor of recommending Article ten? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of four in favor, zero against, one member absent. Route 28 Water Main, which is Article twelve.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend Article twelve, the Route 28 Water Main.
Second.
Okay. That article is fifteen million six hundred thousand dollars, replacing water mains on Route 28 in coordination with the wastewater collection system installation, including all related and incidental expenses. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on twelve? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of four in favors, zero against, one member absent. Water Facilities Improvements Phase Three, which is Article thirteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend Article thirteen, Water Facility Improvements.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second.
So this is pretty straightforward. This is the Phase Three of the overall program, so it's pretty much a lot of the same kind of work. And this is the third phase, and we've been briefed on the overall program, and should be pretty straightforward.
Okay. So all those in favor of recommending Article thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of four to zero, one member absent. Septage Division Capital Expense, which is Article fourteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend Article fourteen, the Septage Division Capital Expense.
Yeah, that has two items. One, the septic roof replacement of four hundred and fifty thousand, and a belt filter press rehabilitation of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, for a total of six hundred and seventy-five thousand. So you made a motion to approve. Did we get a second on that?
Second.
There was a second, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of four, zero, one member absent. Capital Expense, Various Departments, Article sixteen.
Now, this is, this is the article that has four point two million dollars worth of capital expenditure items. Am I correct?
That is correct, and these are as recommended by the Capitol Committee. And I wanted to point out that one point one million of that is for roadway improvements that is a raisin appropriate from the town's tax levy that was an approved override, and the remaining capital items are three million one hundred and five eight seventy-nine.
All right, good. Well, yeah, that one point four zero eight was, was that the same one that was like passed as a technical override years ago at about one point five million?
One point one million.
Was it one one?
Right. And then we.
So it's up to one four?
Yeah, we've increased it since.
Okay. Yeah, we took, we had that taken out of the budget there for a while, I think, during some of the lean years, and now it's back.
Right. We've returned it to the tax levy.
Right, right. Yeah, there's actually thirty-four capital items in here.
The, if we go down through them, it might be helpful just to quickly go through them, some of them. For example.
Want to take us a run through this?
Sure. First of all, the list is, Bill Scott, Assistant Town Administrator. The list is sorted by the rating by the committee. So the ones at the top obviously received a higher rating. I don't think anything received below three. Not everything is on this list that was in the capital plan. Some of them were moved off this list. There were items that the town administrator worked with people to put in the budget that were previously in this list. So the Replace Cruisers marked on mark, that is from a prior warrant article from a prior town meeting. It represents, I believe, the second year of an agreement for financing plan. You'll see later on, I think in Article seventeen, where the new sort of tranche, as it were, of cars start another cycle, and that one will end up in here. Body worn cameras is a program that you've seen in front of you that's going to be highly successful, and it was rated high as a result in the program. Natural Resources is replacing an engine that has failed, and, you know, you can see we don't list the age of all the equipment, but all this equipment was shown to be of a nature to require complete replacement. Supplemental vehicle maintenance, DBW Director can explain that better, but sometimes they're running into more needs in vehicle maintenance, and it's outpacing their budget. Tactical body armor, TASER equipment, cameras are all part of the police equipment that they replace each time with capital. Server virtualization, that's one I believe that is part of IT and their modernization efforts to create better backup in other systems. The dredging and beach nourishment is natural resources program as they go through. And one of the things you want to know is, in the CIP, each one of these has a profile sheet, so you can get even more detail than what I'm giving you. And a lot of these have been in prior plans, but I think that what you'll see in CIP now is, there's a lot of great detail that gave the CIP committee confidence to move forward. The Replace, the Loader and Highway is two hundred and sixty thousand. Later on, there's other loader that is leased program. The K-9 ancillary equipment, that's actually, I believe, the cost of the dog in the ancillary equipment. Cybersecurity training is something that's highly necessary as we're getting more threats. Cruiser ballistic systems equipment, that's part of the equipment that goes in the cruiser. Radio equipment, natural resources is an upgrade, and they will be, I believe, joining the rest of public safety in tying everything in on the same digital system. Playground equipment, Parks and Grounds had gone to each park and done an inventory with vendors to determine what equipment was needing replacement, and that is part of that inventory process. And Parks and Grounds, another vehicle. High school masonry repairs. David Flynn brought this to our attention. They did an inventory of the high school masonry, and there's a lot of places where you see cracks, leaks, mortar displacement, so we believe that this was a very important project. Again, cybersecurity assessment by IT continuing on that program of reducing threats. Natural Resource Pickup, Community Development, Riverwalk Board, events-based. Natural resource pickup, community development, Riverwalk Board, events based, that's part of that sort of funding package and dispersing it over several funds, the bond, CPA money, and this to create one project. Gable sidewall trim from facilities, that's something that is part of a regular program of looking at roofing and things like that. Senior services bathrooms and alarms project, that is, the bathrooms project that everybody has been waiting for, cemetery vehicles, security gates and repairs, I believe the security gate was hit, damaged, and needs to be replaced. Mobile lift and highway, this is a very important item, it is a lift that is stationary, they can move it from place to place, that allows them to get up into higher places in terms of buildings and work safely and have the crew work safely. Building, this is part of their sort of replace, the 200,006 Colorado, replacing their fleet. Parks and Grounds, mobility mats, these are mats that you put out onto the beach that facilitate the use of the sand-based wheelchairs and better access, so people are not having to do that right off the parking lot, so they have the mobility mats, and they are, from some of the pictures, and, you know, that they provided us severely worn and in any replacement. Same thing with building, we see more vehicles to try to get their fleet up to, you know, par climate change vulnerability planning, this is natural resources working with the engineering department are part of that programming and providing funds for consultancy. All-terrain vehicles for police, lower tennis courts, and one of the things that, to the credit of the CIP, they waited, they created their plan, gave it to FinCom, but then they basically took another look at it after the schools, Dennis came back with their votes in capital, because we were caught in prior years of voting on something in favor, and then Dennis voted again, so this year we did that cross-check, and the only things you see on this list, Dennis has also funded. Stormwater and MS4 compliance, an important component of compliance as it relates to stormwater drainage, and then the roadway improvements, I think we discussed earlier, I think this is something that in the levy that is one of the things that the CIP committee has looked for. So, everything is sorted by rating, the roadway improvements are not part of that sorting by rating, and I believe the stormwater is also not sorted out, it stops at the repair lower tennis courts. Each one of these has a profile sheet in the CIP to describe it in more detail.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, do you want to speak to number four, the supplemental vehicle maintenance?
Certainly. That is to extend the life of vehicles, and one of the things we've been doing is doing more significant work on vehicles, containers, you know, painting, that type of thing, to make sure that it extends the life. Through some of the tighter budget years, vehicle maintenance funds weren't very robust within the individual budgets, and so this is a fund that for several years now, we've had to supplement that. I do believe the intent is to maybe work this back into the operating budget over time, but this is a piece that couldn't be this particular year. If it goes back into the operating budget by building up those maintenance funds within the, within the department, you wouldn't see this in a future year.
Thank you. Okay. So there's a wide variety of items on this capital budget, as one could expect, dealing with police equipment and building maintenance at the, at the high school, masonry work, replacement of playground equipment in town, Riverwalk Park, community development, it's a big item, $500,000. Senior center facilities, we have two articles, one for $30,000 for gable sidewall trim, and then on the next one, $200,000 for alarm and bathrooms, which is something that people were anxious to see get done. And then we have various vehicles for various departments. Tennis court repairs at the schools, and those are heavily used, I think people will appreciate that. And then the road, a big ticket item, the roadway improvements to keep our roads in a good state of repair, for 1.4 million. So does anybody have anything else to say, or any questions on the capital budget before we move to a recommendation?
No, I think it looks good, Mr. Chairman, I think this is great.
Did I get a...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend Article, I just lost my place here, Article, Article 16, capital expense, various departments.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero, one member absent. Brings us down to Article...
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, I think that's the last one, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we recommend Article 21, the Higgins-Croll-Roll Shared Use Path Phase Three Utility Easements.
Okay, Bob, you want to talk to this just very briefly, you and I had a discussion, this is a pretty minor thing, isn't it?
Yes, and I'm an expert at it because Jeff explained the entire thing to me, and, but essentially, first of all, it's, all of these are funded in the project budget, and they're very minor items for moving poles that in all of the shared use path will be on the right-of-way in the town's property, but some of the poles that are located in that area now need to be relocated onto private property, and those are the easements. And some of them are wrapped up, some of them might be market value, but we feel the market value is fairly low because it's only the amount of land that's required to locate the infrastructure of a pole.
Okay. Everybody else say on that?
Thanks, Jeff.
Are you moving a recommendation on 21, Mark?
I did, yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of four to zero, one member absent, and I think that takes care of the warrant article list. We do have to sign the warrant.
So there should be, before you sign it, a motion to approve and execute the annual town meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Mark to approve and execute the annual town warrant, and we have a second by Dorcas. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The votes are unanimous vote of four, zero, with one member absent. Okay, we're going to go, Mark, oh, Mark's already ahead of us here. No, he isn't. No, he isn't. That's Dan's blank. Peter and Dorcas, need you both on that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, FinCom met last night and updated all their votes commensurate with what you're doing today, the golf vote and other ones, so those are as of last night, all the FinCom votes.
Missed one. Yeah.
I missed one?
Yeah, one of the...
You're worried about them?
Accounting ones, not a big deal.
Let's see. Oh, okay, this is... Okay. We're going to move on to Dorcas for some board and committee actions here. We have a resignation from the Board of Health. We have a planning board appointment, an age-friendly committee team appointment, and a committee reappointment to the Cape Cod Commission, it looks like.
Yes, first, I'd like to move that we accept with our thanks, and what do we do with that? When we're doing a resignation, it's our thanks and, or just our thanks for service?
Thanks and appreciation for service, sure.
Deborah, I'm going to murder her name, Bruenig, from the Board of Health.
Okay. Does anybody want to move to accept that resignation?
So moved.
With thanks, okay, so moved. I'll second that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of four, zero.
I'm putting forward for the planning board position to appoint Mr. Peter Slovac as a regular member to the planning board, the appointment is for a three-year unexpired term, which will run through July 2024, since he is actually replacing Brad Goodwin, who resigned.
Okay. Does anybody want to move that appointment?
Move the appointment of Peter Slovac?
Second.
Second by Mark, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of four, zero, one member absent.
Okay, and then move for the acceptance of Peter Malpass as an appointment as a regular member of the age-friendly committee team. This appointment is for a three-year term, which will begin, which will run through March of 2026.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of four, zero, one member absent.
And I have a move to recommend the appointment of Cape Cod Commission Representative Dennis Previnson. This would be as the Town of Yarmouth representative to the Cape Cod Commission, and the appointment is for a three-year term, which will run through April 24th of 2026. And this is a reappointment, by the way.
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of four in favor, zero against, one member absent. We're into the next item, which is agenda review. April 4th is our next meeting, it's next week.
We're trying to keep that light to review plenty of time for the annual town meeting review, but we've got a few nice items on for Bruce Murphy recognition and our swearing-in ceremony for Chief Arasque Way, and there is a special one-day license over at the Lighthouse Keepers that we have a hearing on and a transfer. And then jump right into the holiday week, and then we have the meeting April 25. And as you can see, we're going to be very busy after that with meetings on May 2 and May 9. We're trying to get our county night on May 2.
Yeah, I think, I think that's great. Particularly getting, we have a Cape Cod Commission rep, I don't think we've ever met with that person, and I don't think we've heard from our assembly rep at all. And we do have other people that we've appointed to other county or regional boards, we've appointed Bob Lawton to the Regional Transit Authority.
Do you want him in?
You know, the RTA is doing some incredible stuff these days, and I, and I think the electrification of the bus system, Tom Keher, the regional, the administrator of the RTA, is just doing some phenomenal work, and I think if we're doing a county day, then I would see if he'd be interested in joining us and just updating us, updating us on some of the exciting work that they're doing at the RTA. And I think it'd be wonderful to get a library planning committee update on how they're doing, and I understand they're working with Bill, correct?
Actually...
Excuse me, library director is working on Grant to conduct, you know, a more detailed analysis, so.
So they're coming in?
So they're on the list, so I think it looks like a very full agenda, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Talking about the second?
Yep.
Yeah, it does. Okay. Anybody else have any, any comments or suggestions on the agenda? Okay. I'm sure some stuff will boil up to the top, it always does. How about individual items? Mark, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Dorcas?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I have three things. Real quick, if, if the, if the last article is, is approved by town meeting, I think that we as, as the water folks should look at water rates and figure out a way that if someone is using a very small amount of water, and we would have to be in consultant with, with Jeff Colby, that it should be a relatively light amount of, of charge, and then there should be escalating charges if someone goes over the amount. If, if the article does not pass, I'm not sure we need to look at the water rates, but I, I think that's another way, if push comes to shove, to control water usage. If someone sees, sees money coming out of their pocket, if they're, if they're way overusing the water, it would be, it would come out of their pocket. Two, I think some point we should consider having some kind of electronic voting at the, at town meeting, so instead of, instead of a little card that you've got, some kind of electronic voting machine. And last but not least, which I bring up every single time, nips, nip bottles, and it needs, needs to get on, on, onto the agenda sometimes.
It is.
It is on the agenda, I'm sorry.
It's coming up.
Okay.
May 9.
Then I, I apologize, I did, I did not notice that.
There's nip night.
Yeah, okay.
All right? Put that on your calendar. Been heard.
It doesn't mean for you to bring yours.
Although if you find some on the ground on the way, I'd bring them in.
All right, those, those are the three items, and I apologize, I didn't notice that the nips were already on the agenda, because I, I think it's, it's an important thing.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go to the consent agenda, I'm going to pass on individual items.
Okay, for the consent agenda, we have a single item, and it's the approval of the 2023 seasonal alcohol entertainment and amusement license renewals, and there is an attached spreadsheet.
I vote to accept the consent agenda, agenda, excuse me, for the Riverway, the Blue Water and Red Jacket Beach Resort.
That's it?
Those are, those are the items I saw, is there anything else?
No, I think, I think the seasonals are the spreadsheet.
Oh, the spreadsheet.
The three on the front, Peter, were ones that need sign-offs by other departments.
Yeah, on that following spreadsheet, there are a host of other establishments.
Yes, I see them, yep.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Looks like there's 10 of them.
So you moved to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
So I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes by a vote of four to zero with one member absent. And that takes us to town administrator updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of items, I sent out a quick note today, but I really wanted to call it to your attention, I sent out a letter today to Pico Aral from the Mass Office of Travel and Tourism, and it was on behalf of the Cape Cod Baseball League. And they have a project to try to establish a Cape Cod... And they have a project to try to establish a Cape Cod Baseball Hall of Fame here in Yarmouth. And I know that they were potentially looking at the Moose site as one potential site. And I just thought that, you know, that would be a great project. It's in keeping with the town's visioning, and I think would be a very nice draw for the visitors. The Cape Cod Baseball League is nationally renowned. It's the top collegiate baseball league in the country, and it's got a very rich history. So I think, you know, we're all sort of working, you know, together behind the scenes if it's possible to establish that Hall of Fame, and Yarmouth would be a great place for it. But usually, this would be something that we'd have on the agenda and have some folks in and talk about. But they had a deadline on their grant application that they're seeking from Mott. And so, you know, we're supporting them with a letter, but we hope to follow up and have the Board of Selectmen receive a briefing, get some more information on it. But I thought it would be nice to...
I think that would be terrific. I'll go on record as endorsing the letter and make it clear that we're excited about having a Hall of Fame, a Cape Cod Baseball League Hall of Fame in Yarmouth.
I endorse the letter as well. I read, it's a very good letter. What's, what's interesting about that site is it's going to be near the Riverwalk facility. It's going to be near the Widder. It's going to be a, and they're moving it, I think, out of the basement of the Kennedy Museum is where they are now. It's going to be out more centrally located and available to people.
It's a great idea, so.
So I also endorse that letter. You know, I think that having the baseball league here on the Cape is a wonderful advantage for us. And I think that it is a tourist-driven, it drives a lot of the tourism that comes to the Cape. It's an excellent organization.
Thanks very much, and I'll keep you posted. And if it looks like, you know, it could be something to move forward, we'll definitely have it on your agenda and...
That'd be great.
Stay on, on top of that. Now, I wanted to call your attention as well to correspondence we received from town council. I don't know if it has been officially signed by the governor yet, but the, both houses of the legislature have authorized a bill that extends the remote public meetings through 2025. There's a two-year extension on that. And, you know, it would preserve our ability to conduct these remote meetings in the same fashion it has been in the past. So I think that's very important legislation. And it's kind of interesting. I know that they were working on, some of the reps were in favor of a bill that would amend the whole open meeting law to make it mandatory that towns, in addition to posting the public meetings, conduct hybrid meetings. So that, some folks wanted to have it required as law, that we have an in-person, public meeting, properly posted, that folks can participate in remotely. And so they stopped short of that for the next two years. I'm sure they're going to continue to study it. But I think it's just fabulous here in Yarmouth that we have the hybrid meetings, that folks can come in person. It's publicly posted, but also folks can participate remotely, see what's going on, make their comments known. So if anyone's interested, I have a copy of the full law, but that gives us two more years on the system that we have going right now.
Now, can I just ask a quick question, Mr. Chairman? In passing, did they tweak or change anything? Or are they basically leaving the current situation?
Leaving the...
As is with no other requirements?
Yeah, it's, it is an extension, my understanding, extends the emergency guidelines that, for two more years. So they just took the guidelines and pushed them out. That's interesting. Yes, sir?
I understand that the deep, the, the state of Massachusetts Department of Transportation is going to have some stuff on the bridges and, and the roadways. Is there any possibility that we could get, get an update, you know, quickly? I don't know when it's going to, when it's going to appear, but I think people would be interested to know what, what the tentative plans are for the bridges.
Yes, if there's an update on that, we're currently waiting on an update. And I think it's a perfect segue, and I wanted to sort of brief the board. I know Chairman Stone, Mark Forrest, and I, along with our entire town team, participated. Was this yesterday or, so in a meeting with the Mass DOT for an update of the Route 28 projects? We did not get an update on their program for the bridges, other than, you know, we're aware that they're moving forward in their time schedule. Our particular problem that we expressed, and I want to take a minute to just thank our new rep, Chris Flanagan, who arranged this meeting and got together some of the key officials at Mass DOT, because, you know, we're struggling right now in the Route 28 improvements that were supposed to be aligned perfectly with our wastewater project, so that we would simply bury the lines while they're reconstructing the road. They've had a delay, and it's a result of the original resurfacing of Route 28 has been expanded into a resurfacing and safety enhancement, which involves three critical intersections along that roadway, and that made the cost roughly triple. And as a result, the state had removed the funding for it because they didn't have enough in the tip, and they have not replaced it in the statewide tip. And it's now, the project has grown, so it's too large for our local regional tip. So major issue for the town of Yarmouth that could cost extra money in the construction of the sewer lines and the water lines along Route 28. So we had a meeting with them and requested some specific remediation of that problem. And the things that we're looking for is first and foremost, we'd like to get some leadership from the state to try to get that project as soon, as soon as we can, back on the state transportation improvement program, so that it's in line for funding. And, but even if it was on there today, they still have a right-of-way process that takes a minimum of a year. And, you know, there's delays. The tip usually takes a couple of years to work your way through. So what we've also requested is some consideration from the Mass DOT of having a first phase of that reconstruction project that involves utilities only. We felt that potentially there's some stormwater remediation that the Mass DOT could accomplish, as well as having the town put those lines under Route 28, but not do the full restoration with the knowledge that the roadway is going to be reconstructed in a fairly short period of time. And that would still save the town a good deal of money. And the way we left it, you know, they didn't get out their checkbook and start writing, but they are aware of our issues. I think, I want to thank...
Can I just make a...
The selectmen, well, just one more thing, and then I'm done on this. But I wanted to thank, having members of the Board of Selectmen, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, on this meeting with these state officials meant something, and that was a very powerful thing. Sorry, Mark.
I just wanted to, when we were having our meeting with Mass DOT, I was actually going between two meetings. So I'm also on what is called the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, as a county commissioner, where I can also, it's a good perch to look out for Yarmouth, and I'm pleased to report that. At the end of our MPO meeting, we actually did get Yarmouth back on the tip. And it's, it's not in the year, it's not programmed for the year that we want, but in, the tip will be approved at our next meeting next month, and this project will be in the program.
Right.
So that's the latest. Again, it's not slotted for the year that we want, but at least we're back in it. They've heard us grousing and concerned about it for a while, so that was one of the things that we did address at our meeting. So I just wanted to report that. That's the latest development, which is good. I would also share the comments of, of the administrator, that having, having the select board present, but also having Representative Flanagan, the new rep, help us out, I think was terrific. I do think the fact that he is organizing the next meeting already for another month just to kind of keep the pace of this thing on, on track, I think is, is a very encouraging sign. I think everybody's got the message that we want to pick up the pace of the design and move this along at a faster pace. And so I think his intervention has been very, very helpful, too. So a shout out to Rep. Flanagan.
Okay. And I had one more item I just wanted to get into as an update on our wastewater communication piece. And we have the communications team, that we've got representatives from the business community and, and the town actively working together. And I just want to salute the partnerships that we've created through this whole wastewater project. I think are going to be very long-lasting in our community and bear a lot of positive impacts over time. And some of the things that, that we've completed and are planning, we have a completion on the brochure. It's gone through a couple of iterations, and I think we did a really great job incorporating the key information people need to know in terms of the need, the cost, the area. And those brochures are being distributed, I think, by later this week. They're, they'll be back from the printers. And we have the electronic versions that today, and we've been researching this right along, we've conducted outreach to every single neighborhood association in the town and sent this material out and asked it be distributed to every homeowner through every neighborhood association, both inside the Phase 1, but, but also, more importantly, outside of Phase 1, throughout the community. And, and I want to tell you, even this afternoon, I received some fabulous feedback from some of these presidents of the associations that said that they sent them to other interlocking associations. One said that they sent it out to 400 homeowners just today, and, you know, we're directing people to the website, which has been completely redone as Yarmouth Wastewater, so folks can go to the Yarmouth website, look at townofyarmouth/wastewater, and receive a tremendous amount of detail on the project. We have some upcoming outreach that I think is going to be extremely important. This week, we're appearing, I'll be appearing in front of the Rotary Club on Friday, and that's an important group in town in presenting details on the financing program. We have a taping on Monday, April 3, for the, Leo Kekonas has a show that airs on, on Sunday mornings. So the, the next Sunday, we'll be taping information for that that's going to go on the radio. I want to call to everyone's attention, next Tuesday, we have the town meeting run-through. April 4, Board of Selectmen's meeting, starting at 6:00 PM. And on April 13, and we're inviting some of the neighborhood associations to this, we have, I announced at the beginning of the meeting, our wastewater public forum for answers and questions, anything that you wanted to know about wastewater, and whether you were or weren't afraid to ask. We're going to have a lot of information, and that's going to be Thursday, April 13, 6:00 PM, at the Senior Center. And that's also going to be a televised event on the town's government channel. And if folks can't make it, you know, they can see that on, on TV and hopefully gain some more information. On April 18, we're going to be appearing on the Ted Lambert radio show, and we'll have the team presenting information, answering questions. I think Yarmouth makes a pretty good model on, on how this should be approached. And I think the key thing is, is that, you know, we like to view ourselves as, as the groundbreaking. We're not really the groundbreakers on this, but very importantly, and I was talking to Jay Gardner about this earlier today, the actions that we're taking here in Yarmouth, I think, show tremendous leadership in joining some of the leading communities on Cape Cod that are taking responsible steps to address the nitrogen pollution that we all face. We know Falmouth is making some great strides. Barnstable is also progressing along with their plan. Chatham was one of our leaders where, you know, they had one of the first larger wastewater systems. Province Town has done great work, and Orleans is coming on board. Yarmouth now takes its place among the leaders of Cape Cod. And we're a big town, and it's, you know, without having us a part of this, I don't think Cape Cod as a whole is succeeding. And I, and I think that we're in a great position to help with our neighboring communities show leadership on this nitrogen and environmental issue in the sensitive area that we live. So it's very important that this move forward. We've got also mailings that are going out. We're sending two mailings, and one mailing is going to everyone in town, so they can see it. And we're also doing a targeted mailing to folks that attend town meetings. You know, it's a little less costly and targeted to make sure we cover that. And we're involved heavily in, in some of the social media as well, primarily for the purpose of trying to direct people toward our town's website to just get more information. And I want to underscore the issue with the communications piece. It's a very serious problem that we face here in town. And we've talked to other folks in, in other towns on Cape Cod. The lack of newspaper coverage at the local level has hurt us tremendously. And you saw all of the work, all of the detailed, complex, involved, sort of, whether it's the design, whether it's the financing. People need to have this information. And we don't want to have a situation where people come to town meeting with a big financial ask, and they just haven't received the data. They don't have the information, and they're being asked to process everything on site. There's just too much information to try to do this in one night. So I hope everyone in town appreciates the outreach efforts. We have some professional assistants to help us make sure that we push information out to local residents. And the reason for that is so that when people get to town meeting, they can make their own informed decision. And I think it's, we've talked about this before, it's critical that we do that, and we're going to continue to, to do that, just to get people the information that they deserve, that they need. So if any board members have any other ideas for things that we can do, we're trying to be as comprehensive as we can. And again, Paul Choffey's here as our IT Director. He's been just a critical partner on that communication team, pushing information out, helping us, you know, coordinate what, what we're doing to get this done. And so I, I just hope we're successful. And again, our, our goal is to make sure that people can come to town meeting, have seen the information, make an intelligent decision, and we think it'll, it'll work out.
You know, I had a question. You know how the police have these crime, neighborhood crime groups there? And they must have, those captains must in turn have lists as well, that they, how they reach people, email people? I don't know if they're included in those email, those electronic lists, but they, there's probably a good number of, of individuals that comprise those neighborhood crime watch groups.
That's a great idea.
It is, yeah.
I think we can get that data.
Especially in neighborhoods that don't have an association.
And, and I know the Senior Center has a great list, and we've, we've used some of the lists. There's a list of people that have signed up for the community visioning, things of the, that nature, and we're going to be...
Yeah.
We're going to be outreach-ing all of the folks that we have on, on any email lists. But I'm particularly happy that we, we started with those neighborhood associations, because in Yarmouth, the neighborhoods, and it's really the fabric of the town, where a lot of the important opinions are shaped, decisions are made, and, and people participate. You know, there's people that participate in their neighborhood association that don't ordinarily participate in a lot of the public meetings. But, but they're in touch with their neighbors, and they know what's happening, so we want to make sure that, that, you know, we include them.
Okay.
So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you for...
Very good. If no one has anything else, or have a motion to adjourn?
I'd be happy to make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.